Oh, and here's Eric. So Rich, you can hear everything okay? I guess not. Rich?
I think he has left the meeting. At least I don't see him there anymore.
Well, that didn't... Oh, which reminds... well, I'll bring this up later, anyway. That'll be for later. Why don't we get started? We have our guest here tonight. I'm John Stadler.
Yep.
Miggy Smith.
My name's Rich Brown.
And...
Hi, Eric Thirstenberg.
Dave Robbins.
And you are?
I'm Jacob Burgess. I represent Pioneer Laser Inc.
Okay. So do you want to... Oh. Hey, Rich, can you hear me? Will you email him and ask him?
You didn't know it. Can you hear us, Rich?
Rich?
Hello, this is Rich Fangy.
Can you hear me?
We're having problems.
I'll try again.
No, Rich, I don't think it's... I don't understand.
Could you email him and let him know that we can hear him, but he can't hear us?
Yeah.
Well, just so he knows. Well, just give us a second.
Yep, not a problem.
This is, we're having problems with the zoning board, too. The same type of things. I'm not sure what's going on. If there's a problem with our phone, with his phone, or if there's...
Can you just allure him?
Yeah. Is that an issue for...
Are we legally having a meeting?
Yeah. Yes, you can, because there are four board members.
No, in terms of... This isn't like during the remote meetings, which we would have had to shut down.
We are doing this as a courtesy to people.
But we need for him to be able to participate, so...
We should call him.
Well, David, yeah.
Rich, can you hear us?
David, Tim was just suggesting maybe calling him this way.
Can you hear us?
I'm thinking that our... that that's always giving a problem.
Can you hear us? No, you just...
See, the thing is, we're getting... We seem to be getting in... I'm gonna... Use that one and see if it... If we can pick it up off of this one. Rich, can you hear us now?
He might have hung up.
No, I can see you, he's still on.
I know the school board got a howl.
I wish I could tuck the select board into doing that.
No, no, no. It's supposed to be for the use of everyone around town. It's not exclusively for the school. The Lime Foundation gave them funding with the understanding that it would be used by more than the school.
So let's get it in here.
So we should be able to get that in here, because this is, you know, doing this.
So how do we go about getting it in here?
I don't know. I'll have to, I'll talk to whomever I have to talk to.
Okay, because that would be terrific, because this is...
No, I mean, it's just a waste of your time.
Yeah.
Everybody's time that's frustrating to Rich and whoever else wants to call in.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Is it... Rich, we can hear you. Can you hear us?
He can't hear us.
And I have no idea why we are...
Do you have his phone number?
Yeah, it's not the other phone. Fangy, do you know if it's the school board, it has it at school?
Lime Foundation granted the school PTO, the money, but it was actually given to the school. So it resides at the school. And it was with the understanding that other boards in town would be able to use it. It costs like a thousand bucks. I mean, somebody could actually do the town a favor and just give them, so we wouldn't have... But that was the intended purpose, was to be shared around town. And it's very portable, little thing.
I'm at the school often, so I can...
Would you do that?
I can transport it.
That would be great.
We do need to, like, send it up. So David would have a little time with it, I think, to, you know, download the howl app or whatever you need to do to be able to communicate with it.
Can you... oh, yeah, look, I want to try.
And also, there's, you know, specific... You know, it has its own little cords that it plugs into the computer with. And we also use it to, with a smart cord, to broadcast. But until we get a smart cord, just to make sure you get the right cords, because there's a problem.
Rich, can you hear us?
One of those there.
Rich, are you there?
This is off.
That's all off. I've shut the phone system off, and I'm trying to get him through the... Through my computer. Here, let's try that again. Rich, are you there?
All right, I think we better get started.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I have no idea why we're having... it had been working just fine.
Okay. So why don't you go ahead, and if you have anything to say, please share it with us.
So my client, Robert Seelig, is proposing to do a minor subdivision of one lot located on Franklin Hill Road. His current lot, which is about 67 acres, has frontage on Franklin Hill and Acorn Hill. An ample amount of frontage, I might add. What we're proposing is kind of a triangle-type piece, taking some usable land down beneath. And I think that's about it.
Okay.
It kind of explains itself, you know, what we're trying to do.
Shall I or somebody do the checklist? Who would like to do the checklist besides me tonight?
I was told to pass it to you.
Yeah. Tim. Tim, you're right here. All right, Tim's gonna do it.
All right, can you notice there are some things on there already checked off? Those are some of the standard items that are on the plan that I just checked off, because...
So I can skip those.
Well, you can say that they're just there. I went through them and...
Okay. Names and address of each of the butter, my mapping lot, checked off.
I will note, there is one incorrect name.
Lawrence Smith.
That should be Laura and Phil Lara, right?
Which one?
Lawrence and Smith and Lara. It should be Laura, I think.
All right, I'll double-check that one. Guess it should be Laura.
Yes, I just put a little note. Correct Laura.
And then the other one is the Bruce Spalding. That is... that has been sold and is... was sold to Kendall Hoyt and Manning Roundtree. So that's 408, 48.1.
Yep, so this...
So those both now are owned by Kendall Hoyt and Manning Roundtree.
So note that this goes...
So is that now an issue for notification or...
No, it's not, because that's what I...
This Spalding is now part of Hoyt, Hoyt Roundtree.
I verify all the... I didn't catch the Laura, but when I checked my notice list, it was noticed as Laura, so...
Well, I mean, for me, this one.
Yeah, that one I did get.
So just if we're on these little nitpicky things, is the land actually owned by Robert and Karen?
No, just Robert.
Okay. Yes, they're jointly on 408, 57.4.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, go ahead, too.
Names and business address of every engineer or architect, land surveyor, that's checked. Topographic map. Topographic map shall be shown at the same scale as the site survey and shall show existing topography of proposed changes in topography. Also, all low points and high points in other areas needing spot evaluation should be shown. Is that...
Is that checked?
Topography's here.
No, it's not checked.
Some central contours.
Does that look good?
Five foot. Yeah, five foot, cool.
Is that a yes?
Conservation District map. Size per requirements of graphic county registry deeds.
Yes.
Scale no smaller than 100 feet per inch?
It is 100 per inch.
Okay. Complete boundaries and area of entire parcel of proposed lots, north point, bar scale, date, and base, and descriptions of any or deeds.
There is, the inset has the complete, and then the main one has the subdivision. So if that's acceptable to the board.
Well, it's not for the survey, right? So we'd be waiving a full perimeter survey?
Yes.
So is that a yes or a waiver?
Yeah, that... I can just put, we complete survey.
Hello? Is that a... should he check a yes or a waiver on that?
I would check waiver, because you're going, if you waive the full perimeter.
And why are we waiving it? Because we have to put that in when we waive something.
Typically, you waive that when it's not going to provide you with any additional information to make your...
Not needed.
Well, the big lot that has a lot of frontage, so I'm not worried about the ability for the remaining lot to be provided with a zone ordinance.
Okay.
Okay.
Keep going.
Location of zoning district boundaries and area of each lot and each district is property in more than one district. If only one zoning district, only a note should be provided.
If you look at the note down the center of the page, bottom, that does carry, that has the...
So that's a yes.
It's a yes. Solid one zoning district. Lime Conservation District's boundaries and acreages, see zoning ordinance for definition of conservation districts.
He does have all the soils located on the subdivided lot. And that's really the only thing on that lot. There are some wetlands, possibly it's a wet area, I don't know. I'm not a soil scientist, so I can't say that. But on the east side, we were, when we talked to Mr. Seelig, it was, he said it was very wet over there. But I don't know if it's wetlands or not, but the... I see everything in the subdivided lot. All the soils are marked.
Right. I think, yeah, on the lot calculations, it says 1.13. I guess that's acres wet.
Yes, that'd be that 347B soil. That is a heavy soil.
So is this a yes?
I would say yes. It's not, they're not marked per se as the names that we have defined in the ordinance, but the information is on the map.
Okay.
Soil types including legend and location of all perk test sites, soil test pits and borings.
Now, there was no, I didn't see any perk test information on this. So I, you know, the soil types are included, but there is no legend. It just has them listed on the...
Right.
Well, the idea is, is whether or not there's soils that are suitable for a septic system. So, and if we don't have perk test, that type of thing. So yes, we do the lot. So is there any... And I know you don't need to have a state-approved system designed, because it's over five acres, according to the state. But where would the septic go?
I believe that what their intention is, is to put it kind of where the 7.5 is. That's about the building area that they're concerned with. In the Marlowe soil, which is a receptive soil, deceptive design. You can kind of see that from that stone wall that kind of separates the middle of the lot. The lot becomes pretty steep going down to the lower part on the west. So their intention is to build in that Marlowe soil.
And so they can get away from... So is that Marlowe soil, one of these, like, ag soil or something like that?
That would be considered a national ag soil, yes.
So would they be able to build on that?
They're going to have to go to the zoning board for special exception to develop that.
So they'd get up to 25%?
Well, they'd be looking at the parent lot, so...
Up to 25% of the parent lot?
So we're assuming, without test kits, we're assuming there's an area for a septic?
Well, we're assuming they're going to get permission from the zoning board to develop part of the ag soil. That's what we're assuming. And we're also assuming that the soil information, and this is taken from the graphic county survey.
That is correct.
Is accurate.
You are a septic designer for the state of New Hampshire, right?
Yes, I am.
Did you put your shoal in that soil at all, or...
I've been to, I've been on the site many times. My belief is that that Marlowe soil will perk without any hesitation. If you were over, further to the right, that is definitely heavy soil. And as you get towards that steeper stuff, that has some receptive properties, but it's just too steep.
So do we, as a board, do we need to say anything, like... This is conditional upon approval of a septic system?
Well, it's a conditional on development on, I mean, the area where the septic might be located needs to get downward approval to be developed.
So shall we include that as a condition?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's a condition.
And the buyer needs to know that.
What do we do?
So...
In condition...
I guess you could say yes with condition... Condition of approval is what? Approval from the ZDA for a developable site.
Which is, I'm not going to issue a permit for the house until that happens, anyway, so...
Right. It's just, you know, problem in putting that on.
And do you want to also condition on a state approval of a septic system?
State approval of septic. You're much, much better at this than I am. Very neat, you've...
You're right. I don't know if it's gonna be there.
You should see mine.
Surface water drainage ditches and swales.
I think that the topo lines pretty much show you where all that is.
Right, yep.
And then you do have all the culverts marked on the road.
That is correct, yep.
Is everybody okay with that?
Right, there are new culverts.
So that sounds like a yes.
Okay, yes. Subdivision layout map. Lot size, average subdivisions planned. It's not.
It's not. So not applicable.
Well, he's still in the layout map, right? Site survey map. Size per requirement graphic county registry deeds. Oh, we checked these, right?
Yep.
So check. Scale no smaller than 100 feet, check that. Be prepared to sign and certify immediately. Surveyors checked. Complete boundaries and area of entire parcel, north point, bar scale, date, and dates of any revisions.
The complete boundaries, that's going to, you know, that's up to the board if they are happy with the... Let the inset showing the complete one, or...
Is the board happy?
I'm okay with waiving it.
Okay, we... We have all the, we have enough info.
Well, I don't know if we have enough info, but I've got feeling that this remaining lot's going to be zoning compliant. That's the most interesting.
Then what's the reason, if it's not, that we have enough info?
Okay, we do have enough.
Okay.
Assuming that they were just writing that detail.
Okay.
All right.
Existing and proposed street right-of-way lines to mention. Tangents, cords, and radii have points of curvature and tangency of curved streets. Angles of lot names, but this is posted, so...
Yes, it has Franklin Hill and Acorn Hill, and that's...
Yeah, you have that checked.
Okay.
Existing and proposed lot lines, angles, and dimensions of, dimensions, lot areas in square feet or acres, consecutive numbering of lots, and survey monuments. We have all that, right? Location of existing and proposed easements, including old wells, water rights, and rights of way. An area, areas affected by existing and proposed covenants, reservations and restrictions benefiting and averting the property.
And true, there's utility easements on the property.
And that's the only easement?
The only thing.
Yeah.
That's the only thing we're aware of.
Yeah, okay. Location of existing and proposed parks, other than space and giving natural and human-made features.
I would just mark that as not applicable.
Location of existing and proposed utilities, wells, septic systems, buildings, drives, parking areas, stormwater drains, lines, drainage structures, and drainage waves.
There's nothing with the proposed utilities, wells, or septic system, buildings, drives, that type of thing.
Well, where would the driveway be?
I believe the driveway would be entering from the east side, up by the Marlowe symbol up here, right by the utility easement, at the top of the hill there.
So it's going to have to go through a wetland?
They may have a wetlands crossing. I'm not exactly sure. It is a little, it gets drier right in that general area. They had also talked about past that stone wall, maybe coming up right there. I think that it still needs to be assessed.
Well, has anybody talked to Tim or anybody about, like, where possible driveway location would be? It's too bad that's going to have to bust through the stone wall there.
Yeah.
And they have to be a certain distance from the lot, from the lot line, driveway.
Driveways can go right up against...
No, I think it's near section.
They go through the setback, or right into the setbacks, if there's no other option.
And they go right next to the boundary.
Yep.
And I think that based on the lot condition, that's definitely where they're going to have to be, is up on that up front.
But we don't know that there's a safe location there. No one's looked at that.
You will have to, you have to look at it further. It's going to need a new curb cut.
Yep.
And...
Yeah, Scott and I'll have to look at that.
Yes, Scott and Tim will have to...
So that should be a condition.
Well, I don't really like approving lots unless we know that there is a safe location. Because what if there isn't? And Scott really is not unhappy. And if you needed to then rotate the boundary line a little bit, or to create, you know, give this easement over to some other part of the parent lot to get to, you know, the development area.
Right, I understand. So how does, how does everybody else, is everybody else on the same page?
We can make it conditional.
Make it conditional?
I do know that the buyer had told me that he discussed this with the highway department, and that they had kind of agreed that that was the access. I don't, can't verify that for absolute certainty, but that's what I've been told.
So is the, is the board comfortable making this a condition? Or does the board want to consider this an incomplete part of the application?
Well, for me, I mean, I think we were talking about conditions. I think that there's, I mean, a condition to me means, you know, what needs to be done before this plan gets sent up to the registry. And for me, they don't need to get a septic system, state-approved, before this gets created as a lot. But I would want there to be some positive statement from our driveway people that we can get a safe curb cut.
So would you be, would you be satisfied with the condition?
For the driveway, yes.
Okay, so we'll have a condition for the driveway.
And if Scott's already, if...
Yeah.
If Craig, is Craig, Craig's already talked to Scott, and then Scott?
Yeah, we need, but we need to know.
The name wasn't set. We're not exactly sure where that could have been, and so who knows? Oh, over there's fine.
I think that's a reasonable condition.
One thing to clarify for the board, we're using the utility line, center line, as our boundary. And if that helps clarify, you know, location for anybody that's familiar with the area.
Okay.
Well, I don't know that the drive, that the road agent knew that that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, I agree.
So, I mean, I don't know.
Right, so we have it as a condition.
Yeah.
All right, let's keep going.
If you'll remind me, I just printed out the regulations and the curb cut applications that you take with you.
Oh, perfect, thank you. All right.
Okay. Location of zoning district boundaries and area of each lot and each district is property in more than one district. If only one district, the note will be sufficient.
We got the note.
We got the note.
Name, address, and map, and lot numbers of every abutting owner of property, and fee or easement, and the name and address of any engineer, architect, landscaper, soil scientist, or other professional involved in the preparation of the application shown.
So...
Other than the two corrections.
So that's another place you can just say yes with corrections.
Do we need the name and address of the utility?
I don't know. Do we?
We've never done utility easements. Looking for notifications.
Good question.
Yeah, absolutely.
Next.
Site location map showing location of proposed subdivision in relation to the general area of the subdivision. Application requirement, all surface water and within 200 feet of the site, including river streams, intermittent streams, lakes, ponds, marshes, wetlands, areas of high and moderate groundwater favorability, flood-prone areas, drainage ditches, and swales.
Is that a yes?
Well, I think, you know, there's no surface water up there that I know of.
Right. And the wetlands are shown.
The wetlands are shown. There's, the culverts are shown, so that shows where there's...
So that sounds like a yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Property setbacks according to table 5.1 of the zoning board.
Yep, that's shown on, in the note.
Just put, and shown in the...
Wait, back to, back to, I mean, isn't there an intermittent stream down at the bottom?
Let's see, I believe, there's definitely a drainage there. I don't recall if it is an intermittent stream.
Yeah, I, you know, I...
You know that it is a drainage. That's what's indicated by these contours, kind of sloping down like that.
Right, and you can see where the contour's kind of bottomed out, and there's culverts there. You know, I ride my bike down here a lot, so I know it's, it's definitely goes, you know, Franklin Hill from the east goes down and goes up before it curves. There's a definite...
Swale.
Swale that you can see, which you can see in the contours. And I didn't know if there's an intermittent stream there or not.
That's something that if we're out there setting these rebars, we can locate, put on the map before, before signature, and send that over to the MIOR.
So is there anything you want with that?
I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Final plaque. After plan where approval will within 60 days of approval, provide two paper copies of the MIOR of the final site survey map, according to the state of the graphic county registry deeds, with signatures and notices in accordance.
It has, that'll have to come.
It's supposed to say, we'll come.
To be, to be delivered.
Yeah.
Lot size and density calculation. Provide a worksheet to show the lot size of each proposed lot, using definition in section two of the subdivision regulations of the towns. Conservation District map.
That's in the lot calculations in the center of the...
Right.
So that's a yes?
That's a yes.
Okay. Sewerage disposal. All proposed sewage disposal plans and details, including all computations and analysis and description of impacts on surface groundwater quality, adequacy of site for septic system and sewage disposal, provision for an adequate buffer zone between all portions of septic system and surface water.
I think that whole sewage disposal will probably require a waiver, if you're going to make it a condition.
So just waiver, condition on ZDA.
Well, waiver, state approval of a septic system.
Are you going to be designing a system for them?
As of right now, that's unknown.
Okay. Because Lime has a little bigger setback from wetlands for leach fields than the state does, so you're going to need to get somebody to do this, you know, wetland delineation for the 347B is wet, and make sure that's out of there.
Hundred-foot setback from that.
Yeah. And we've done quite a few septic designs here in Lime, so...
You have.
Um, in addition to locating the existing septic system and submitting a statement from the septic designer as to its condition, the accuracy of replacement of leach field must be identified on, so that's conditioned on the same thing.
Well, did someone, you know, saying if, it must be identified for lots with existing residences, there are no existing residences on this.
Yeah.
So is that not applicable?
Yep.
Just put a name.
Provide results of all, all soil tests including dates, locations by reference to conservation district map, percolation rates, soil profile with depth to ledge, clay, hard pan, existing seasonal high water table, and analysis of suitability of soils and areas proposed for septic systems. Test pits shall be located in areas only where septic systems will be allowed in the line zoning laws.
And you put those all on the, the septic design, so when we get a design, we will have all that.
So how shall we mark this, another condition?
That it'll be as part of that, uh, condition of the state.
Part of the state.
Septic approval.
Part of the state.
Will provide that information.
So a condition on state septic approval.
Yeah.
Okay. Surface water runoff, sedimentation erosion, clean provides to control surface water runoff so as to protect surface water quality, prevent sedimentation and erosion.
I think as a fact that there's nothing, no house site shown, either you're gonna have to waive it or condition that the, the plan with the house site be, when submitted with that information at the time they would go to build it.
So how should we word that?
I don't know, waive it.
But we still have to say why.
The site, if it helps, the site is almost a natural slope and any kind of drainage or erosion is already occurring, so anything that they add to it isn't gonna add any load to where it's already kind of been.
Yeah, uh, but I don't know, but I mean, we have to address this in kind of legalistic terms, so. On, on what grounds are we waiving this?
Well, beyond the plan that David gets, right, in houses.
Well, not necessarily, I don't, that's, um, a lot of times I will get a site plan, says here's where the house is going to go, um, or a lot of times it's on the, the septic plan, so if you want-
So what do we need here?
Yeah.
That's up to you what-
No, but I, I'm, uh, what is, where, what is the board's thinking? I mean, do we wanna, do we want that shown on the plan?
It, you know, it's not really necessary, um, in the zoning for any other type of, you know, if we go and build a house and it doesn't need a zoning board approval, there's nothing in the zoning that says they have to provide a plan. Typically, we ask that they use the best manag- best management practices for erosion control for any construction. And that's a typical condition that the, uh, the ZBA puts on any type of construction.
Right.
Um, and there, there is a whole set of guidelines from DES on the, the best management practices for erosion control, so it is a-
So if somebody comes in to get a permit from you for a house, then you just suggest that they use-
I ask that they use, and I will point them towards the-
Well, do you suggest, or, or are they required?
They're not required, there's nothing in there that says you have to do this, which is where I'm, I'm pointing, th- this is a requirement that the board is adding on to construction.
It's in the zoning ordinance.
Well, it's in the, the-
It's in the zoning ordinance that best management.
Right, so.
Practices, so I mean, there, this isn't just pulled out of thin air. Um, it, this, I, I'd like feedback from the rest of the board on this.
So what do you get, what, what, what are we deciding?
Yeah, is it surface water runoff, sedimentation erosion? Provide plans to control surface water runoff so as to protect surface water quality and prevent sedimentation and erosion.
So when we give a waiver, we're required to, you know, give a, a good reason why we're giving the waiver?
See, I, I wouldn't say recommend wa- making a waiver, I would set a condition saying that when the house is built that they use the best management practices for erosion control.
That's fine with me.
And I can actually add that as a note as well.
Okay.
On the plan then would satisfy the board.
That, that would-
And that way-
Yeah.
It covers the board and say that you're not waiving, you're saying-
This is a condition.
This is a condition.
Need to be on the plan for the house or just-
Rich, yes.
Yes, um, I, I was hoping I might be able to, I've been on this drainage thing, um, it, I, while I haven't been up to see this since we got the application, um, that road is a pretty steep road and, you know, there's a number of culverts, um, I, I would think that the board would be interested in where the applicant is proposing to put the drainage from the site because you're all of a sudden creating impervious surfaces on a very steep and wet site. And if that drainage were to go towards, uh, the town's road, um, there's just gonna be more drainage in the swales and, um, and erosion and, and possible, um, you know, possibility, more of a possibility for, for washouts for the town. So, I mean, following best management practices is, is good, but I think, um, directing, you know, not increasing the drainage to go along the road, the edge of the road is an important feature of, of this project or should be an important feature of this project. And, you know, at this point, I, I'm not sure the applicant has indicated, uh, or I, I, I think it should be, the applicant should have some responsibility to, um, to indicate where the runoff is gonna go or we need to make a condition that, that this be looked at again.
So-
As much as, go ahead.
So, um, what would, what would be the condition that you would, that you would like?
Well, I, I would tend to think that the, there should be a building envelope indicated and there should also be a driveway, uh, um, location approved before this, uh, actual, this application actually gets approved. And so my concern is you're putting up an awful lot of conditions on this and you're putting a lot of pressure on the, the highway guys to have to approve something after it's already been approved or conditionally approved. And so it feels to me like a little more homework should be done before this application's approved, but, uh, you know, that's just one opinion.
Right, well, with, thank you.
One thing I'd like to point out to the board, um, if you look where there's a break in the stone wall towards the middle of the lot, you'll see that there's a natural drainage going away from Franklin Hill and Acorn Hill. And my, my suggestion would be that that would be probably where the drainage would go from this house. Would be down kind of on this natural drainage away from all of that.
Does, does that address your concerns, Rich?
Yeah, if it's indicated on the plans, but right now, nothing's indicated on the plans.
So, uh, why don't we make a condition that it's indicated on the plan?
Yep.
Okay.
That's something that I can usually add.
Drainage indicated.
And, and thank you, Rich, and I'm glad, uh, that this system started to work because we couldn't, you couldn't hear us before.
Right, no, it's great, I can, I can hear you.
Okay.
Especially when you speak up.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay, so-
Drainage indicated.
On, on the, on the plan.
Okay. Preservation of significant natural and historic features, identify described plans for preservation and protection of significant scenic points, brooks, streams, water bodies, marshes, wetlands, wildlife habitat, other natural resources, historic buildings and features.
My-
Not applicable?
Yeah, that's my first thing.
Is, is, is not applicable, okay with everybody?
Yes.
Uh, looks like a yes, or not applicable, and we're almost at the end.
Uh, title matters, provide a copy of each of the following, most recent deed to the property if not on file with the town.
It is on file with the town.
Okay. Uh, all present or proposed easements, covenants, reservations or restrictions benefiting or burdening the property if not on file with the town. Location of all areas affected to be, or to be affected thereby shall be clearly identified by appropriate reference to site survey.
Yeah.
So there's no easements?
There, no, the, the utility easements, but I didn't find any other easements when I looked through the file.
Okay, so yes. National flood insurance requirements?
Um, not applicable.
Maybe just-
Not gonna be a lot of flooding up there.
Hopefully not.
You can just add utility.
A little washout Franklin Hill Road first. If, if there's problems with flooding up there, we have some much bigger problems elsewhere in town.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, uh, Tim, excellent, excellent job. I'd like to make a motion that the, uh, application is complete, is, is there a second?
Do we have to list all of it?
Uh, yeah, I should say, complete with the conditions listed on the checklist. Uh, and Eric seconds it, uh, all those in favor?
Um, sorry, I, I was gonna ask if you want to do your point, Rich, but you can't because Ben is out.
I can't.
Sorry, my mistake.
Um, all those in favor? Um, all those opposed, no, okay, so, uh, now is there any board discussion, uh, remaining?
Um, I just have to say, I, I've been appalled by a, a three-lot subdivision that's being developed in Hanover. Um, it, it's been brutal and I really, um, am appreciative of Rich making these comments to have that driveway laid out and a direction for the drainage because, um, it, it's, it's harsh.
It can lead to-
And, and Franklin Hill Road, Hill Road is not a good road to start with, it does not need any impact.
All right, did, did you hear that, Rich?
I muted, so.
Yes, yes, I heard that.
Okay. Um, all right, so, uh, is there any further discussion?
Um, I'm just, I have to state, I'm sad that the stone wall has to be breached for a, um, driveway entrance. And I hope that that can be done in a way where, you know, it's somewhat tasteful and that there's no ledge that has to be blasted or anything like that there.
Yeah, I, I agree, but I don't think, I think that's beyond our-
Well, we may, I mean, the one concern, I forget, I, I don't have the, the regulations up in front of me, but the curb cut may push that driveway further down and save that, uh, there, there's a setback distance from intersections.
Do you approve the, the cut, or is it, is it just Scott?
Well, we both do.
You-
Yeah, we look at site distances, so we need, we need two hundred feet in both directions.
Yep, but there's also a, uh, in the regulations, it does state a distance from intersection.
Is that for driveways or for new roads though?
I think the, for the, under the curb cut, it's in, uh-
It's in new roads.
Yeah.
It's a driveway, yeah.
I didn't remember that, I didn't, I don't know if we've ever had that from up before, at least not recently, but.
All right, we'll keep that in mind.
Yeah.
All right, um, any other comments before we go to a vote? All right, um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minor subdivision with all of the conditions.
Hold it, I wanna be clear about what conditions we wanna have prior to the MYR being recorded, right?
So I have, then you-
So let's read through them.
You have the state-approved septic and ZBA approval for the, uh-
Encroachment on-
The encroachment on the-
Ag soil.
Ag soils.
But that's really more prior to a building permit, right?
Right, that, that doesn't, if that's-
Yeah, and so, I, 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 I think that that is something that we wanna put in, that, um, you know, we're approving it with the understanding that whoever buys this lot needs to go to the ZBA to get permission to put, um, any development on, you know, through the wetlands and also, um, onto the ag soils.
But aren't, that is a oversight, but that's what we are sending.
But that's not a condition kind of of, you know, that, we're, we're saying that that's the understanding, they're gonna need to do it anyway, but it's just to give the buyer an FYI. So the only thing they really need to do is to have their drainage and driveway figured out.
So what do you, uh, let's get down to the specifics of what the cond- are you saying that's not a necessary condition?
We're gonna, the MYR's gonna-
But I, I just wanna know, if, if you-
It's a necessary FYI to the, to the buyer.
But, but do you want it as a condition?
I would approve it with the understanding that the development-
But that's a condition, an understanding is a condition.
I was gonna say, what I could do is I could put a note on there saying that the board approves this plan with the condi- the following conditions and put the, all those conditions right on there so that when you sign it, you're approving it with the understanding that, that has to be done before you'll-
Right.
Send it up to them.
And the buyer will see that and-
Right.
But as you know, I don't want the MYR sent away until we know that we have a driveway that's, you know, gonna be acceptable to the road agent, so that's kind of something different.
Well, now, what I'm, what I'm thinking is putting the conditions of the ZBA approval and the state's, the state-
Right, septic.
Septic.
Yeah.
On the plan, but the other two have to be addressed before the MYR be sent. And I'm not gonna add a note about those two things.
Okay, okay, I'm, I'm, I'm good with that.
Right, so you got that, David?
Yeah, well, I also have that you want to have the curb cut approved and the driveway layout. And that makes sense because you could lay out a driveway and then not have the highway department or Tim approve it, it may not meet the regulations, so it should be a curb cut and the layout, uh, together because you wanna have, and not just the curb cut, you wanna have, know where that driveway is going in completely.
And you, and, and did you get the, uh, the, the fine points of, of what, of what the language is? We're, we're not having a condition, but we're having an understanding.
And the other thing is-
So will you have that-
Yep.
Marked?
For the driveway, it needs to be drained and that drainage shouldn't go into the ditch.
And, and I, I know you show the drainage for the-
Okay.
Yeah, but the driveway, if it's coming in from this corner, they're not gonna run a drainage ditch all the way to get to here. I mean, they're gonna put it out onto the road, of course.
Some of that's gonna block the road.
So, um-
Depending on the steepness, I mean, and it, it looks like they won't, we won't need a culvert, right? Cause it's pretty flat there, but-
I, I believe that's true, yeah, it's, it's fairly flat, if you look at the contour lines, there's only about a five-foot distance over about a hundred feet, I mean, it's, it's pretty flat.
So if it's pretty flat, there won't be too much water coming off.
No, I, I think that there may even be, you know, looking at the contour lines, there's probably even a natural drainage going right to that culvert that's right there by the road, that, that road symbol right there. So my guess is that any kind of drainage that would be added to it would be minimal impact. Um, that's also gonna go before the ZBA anyways. When we have, when we go to get the ag thing, we're gonna have to show all these different processes to them and before we can get their approval.
But they're not gonna look at your drainage, honestly, and, um, so it's not anything that they're gonna see and take action on, you know, we're concerned because of the impact to the road, obviously, so.
But we're having that in there, right?
Yeah, you, that you're gonna show the drainage for the-
Okay, so those are the conditions.
And driveway site.
The conditions and understandings, so, uh, I'll make a motion again that, uh, to approve the minor subdivision with the conditions and understanding, um, that we've discussed. Uh, and I know I have a second from Eric because he did it before, he'll do it again. Uh, all those in favor, uh, say aye, all those opposed, thank you very much, sir.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you for your patience. With a little glitch at the beginning.
We have the curb cut stuff across the-
Yeah, could, could you pass that?
He can read, yeah?
Oh, no, the, the, there's just so much over in the line, that's why I'm like, no, serious?
Yep.
Just so I have another copy of it. Have a nice night, folks, thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night.
What's up?
Is it Jacob Burgess?
Yes.
Oh, okay, he's Jacob Burgess.
He's the son of the, uh, he founded the-
I was gonna say, yeah, cause it was an old, years ago that was the Burgess.
Yeah.
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 The Burghs and his sons.
Harry Burgess was, was in the lot.
Yeah, way back.
And, uh, I wanted to give this to you.
Well, thank you. That's very helpful.
Just to keep us, the rudder and-
Keep us going.
The rudder and the water and-
That's great. All right, we'll just wait for David and then we'll get on to the meds and I have a bit of an announcement to make, so.
We're doing this whole thing, right?
Yeah. Yeah, tonight. Well, 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 fancy meeting you all here tonight. What a commentary.
Who didn't, who didn't come and complain about your assessment? Who did not?
There were four people in there that didn't come.
Just, oh, maybe one of them could have been you.
I'm just kidding.
I didn't, I should have, is it too late?
All right.
No, you got between November
I didn't complain either. I asked them to raise mine.
Okay.
My children appreciate that.
So, all right, before we get to the minutes, I I heard from David Van Wheat tonight and he's he's gonna resign, unfortunately, because he's just got too much going on. So I would suggest that the board accept his resignation with regret, which is sincerely how I feel.
Yeah, that's about his product.
It is very good.
Well, if he could bring his dog to the meeting, would that be okay?
That might help. But no, he he he's pretty pretty clear that he's got his his dance card, his full. So that that being said, let's go on to the, we have two week, two meetings of minutes, two minute meetings.
Eight twenty-six.
So anybody have comments on, eight twenty-six is the first one? Yeah, any, any comments on that?
Yes.
Go ahead.
A couple typos on the second page, item two, second paragraph, Rich Brown. I think it's fair to describe, say, Rich Brown is a principal
Okay.
In the, in the Penile Project.
Yep.
And recuse himself. Then on page three, the top, it says, blah, 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 that could alter the board's original decision. That needs an apostrophe S on boards. And then actually, I wanted to add something back on page one, just above where it says waivers.
Where it says what?
Where it says waivers.
Yep.
Rich Brown asked whether it was allowed to have two conversions in senior housing on the same lot. David, I, yeah, I printed it out. David Robbins clarified that this was allowed and the ordinance states that buildings on a lot may be converted if they have heat, utilities, et cetera, for five years prior. This satisfies Brown's concerns.
So read it again, or should I just look at it?
Sure.
Oh, did you do it again?
All right, read it again.
Did you take that from the tape?
I did. Yeah.
So just read it, because Eric wants to hear it.
Did somebody else want to hear it?
I mean Rich was gonna read it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
A dramatic reading.
Things are getting thrown around, I don't know, I didn't mind, so I was just
I don't have COVID, you don't have to worry about that. Rich Brown. It's true. Rich Brown asked whether it was allowed to have two conversions in senior housing on the same lot. David Robbins clarified that this was allowed and that the and the ordinance states that buildings on a lot may be converted if they have heat, utilities, et cetera, for five years prior. This satisfies Brown's concerns. If it just asked for a little bit
Yeah, the context is a little bit vague.
The heat and is for converting multiple units, which in this case, you know, that house has been converted to two.
Right.
So you can do a single family if it doesn't have that.
Okay. But just read the line, with that last part, because it just sort of says heating, et cetera.
Yeah, I mean, I actually have a full transcript, but
Yeah, but just go ahead.
Yeah. David Robbins clarified that this was allowed and that the ordinance states that buildings on a lot may be converted if they have heat, utilities, et cetera, for five years prior.
Okay.
And and I certainly accept qualifications to this.
Okay, and and what were the, just read the full thing, since you said you have that? The et cetera.
It's it's quite long. I think the
Just read the relevant part.
Yeah, okay, in a conversion, it does speak to just buildings and it does, if the ordinance does speak to just buildings, it doesn't limit, it does not say, quote, you can convert a building on a lot, but buildings on a lot may be converted. There are limitations on a building, you have to have heat, utilities, all that for at least five years before you do the conversion, before the building would qualify for that. So there are a lot of places in town with a lot of buildings that do not have all of that in it and and those would not qualify for conversion.
Okay. And who's saying that, David?
I was, David was I was speaking, a little bit out of context in that I was referring to the conversion of, you know, you were asking, the question was, if I remember correctly, was asked, can you convert the, I think we were talking about the barn, but the the whole, and I think it was a multiple question, that it was the barn and have that conversion on the same lot as the senior housing, and my, I may not have come off clearly, but I was trying to explain that you can convert, the zoning ordinance says buildings, so it refers to more than one building on a lot. And then I was saying, I was referring to the main house being the one having your heat and all the those being livable. Then you can convert that to multi-units. The barn itself could have only been converted to one because it, I don't believe there was an apartment in there up until this time, so.
So are you comfortable with that language?
I'm, that's, I'm, yeah, it's not
We'll just make sure you're comfortable with that.
Yeah, no, I'm very comfortable with it, it's not
Okay.
Or I mean, should we just say, David Robbins said that this was allowed and ended there?
You could say that I just clarified to the conversions. You just say, you asked a question and then said that I clarified the the conversion.
That's fine with me. Okay, anything else?
Yeah.
Oh.
I just had a couple
You're done, Rich?
I'm done. I just had a couple really minor typos. First page, paragraph that starts waivers, fourth line down says, the budding lots are shown, are shown but due to, I think there should be a to in there, for the shape of the lot.
Yep, good.
And then on page two, the first paragraph under item two, Penile Project, that's the submitted final plan for the condo and conversion, but had exceeded, that should be ED, exceeded the sixty day submission?
I think that's a good
Minor, minor thing.
Good job, Tim.
Okay, is that it?
I have one minor thing as well.
And one to go.
On page one, item one, the first sentence, John, note that Penile is absent and you cannot appoint an alternate to sit for the select work representative period, therefore.
Okay.
Good eyes, good eyes on the ground.
I can nitpick too.
No, that's good. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes as amended by everybody, by by Rich Brown, Tim.
Don't we just say as amended?
As amended, okay. And there's a second from Vicki, all those in favor, aye, all those opposed, no. Okay, let's go to the the next one. Anybody got stuff on mine?
No, I agree.
I have nothing on this.
All right, it's something like, I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of September ninth, two thousand twenty-one, as drafted, is there a second? Tim, Tim Cook gets the second, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed?
I'm just gonna abstain.
Okay, so Vicki's abstaining, were you, were you serving?
Uh, I was, yes.
Okay, so
So I can't vote, and I
Okay, so unanimous.
Wasn't clear whether I could be designated to be
Well, let's just consider that that your service of last week extends to the minutes relating to that service. All right, so on to the the homework. I sent mine ahead so that you'd have at least something to think was terrible.
Yeah, I threw it away.
Yeah, I burned, I burned mine. So, yeah, so
Releasing all that carbon?
Oh, I forgot, I forgot, I'll I'll go and get it back. Yeah, so go ahead with either your own ideas or working off this or whatever.
Well, first of all, I think the goal should be to encourage solar energy systems in the town line, not to pass it for this year's town vote.
I I don't think those are mutually exclusive. I'm just saying the goal is to get it done.
Oh, okay.
That's not
Well, I thought you meant like specifically here, because I think
Oh, no, no, that's not
Our intention here is to encourage the
No, no, the goal, it's an outline, and the goal is to get this thing done this year.
Okay.
So, John, I think this was good, I mean this is a really good start, I mean, this is worth arguing about.
Exactly, no, that's, and that's exactly right, it's meant as simply a starting point.
Yep.
So go ahead.
The things that I like, the onsite solar energy, it sounds like this is the accessory use that we're talking about and we're not gonna get into some of the group metering and
Well, that, I mean, what happened, I I was actually talking to our former colleague, Kevin Sarr, who's now in Connecticut. And, you know, and and I said, you know, this is really complicated, it's really hard to figure out. And he said, you know, and I I said, we're not getting any feedback. And I know it's, at least in part, it's COVID related, but we're we're not, we don't know what the town thinks other than that they think generally it's a great thing. And and he suggested, and I thought it was a great idea, is, you know what? Get, take some photos, get a feedback from the town so that they're actually, you were not speaking vaguely, well, what would you think of a solar array? Of course, you know, we can then argue about, was that a good photograph, but we can get to that. But having photographs, so that people are actually, we're all talking about the same thing, at least. And 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 Eric had said at a previous meeting, well, you know, at least let's get the quote unquote easier part done, and then we can come back and do that with more input. Because I'm I'm just really concerned, we're just gonna be making assumptions based on what we think.
Right, I mean, we think about it a lot, which is good, but if there's no
There's nobody there.
Right, so think, I liked, I liked speaking about the onsite solar design to meet the electrical needs within the limits of a lot. I mean, I think that's, that's a good place to start with the accessory, the accessory use. I'd like to, I'd like to throw out that we should allow either 100% or 120% of the lot's requirement as something that people can do.
Explain that, what does that mean, the lot's requirement?
Well, you know, it's the, the onsite solar energy is designed to meet the electrical needs within the limits of a lot, so I got a home, or I got a home and a shop, or I got a farm, and I got all this stuff. And I want to be able to generate, I think it is reasonable for us to allow people to install a solar system big enough to serve the needs of that lot.
So this isn't, this isn't an argument, I'm just asking the
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
So how do we define the needs of the lot? I mean, in terms of 110%, because you could have, I mean, it would have to be completely variable, lot to lot.
So a couple things come to mind, you know, Kim Quirk from Revision said, six, seven kilowatts is what people are installing by and large now, and so maybe there's a threshold that if you're less than seven or eight, or I don't know, some some number, you go in, you talk to Dave. Well, first off, if it's roof mount, we don't much care. If it's ground mount and you're six, seven, eight kilowatts, you go talk to Dave and if he says you're not gonna encroach in the setbacks or you're not gonna do other things, he can give you a permit. If you want more, maybe we say you get a special exception and you get your solar installer to come in and say, oh, for this farm, or for this particular use, yeah, you're gonna want a 10, 15, 20 kilowatt array. And that, and that the special exception process, the way I understand special exceptions is that basically it's like, yeah, you can do this, but we want you to tell us exactly what it is you're gonna do, as opposed to just going in and getting a building permit, zoning permit.
We don't do zoning building permits.
Yeah, and so that's, that if it's for the use of a lot, you get, you know, 100 or 120, I don't feel strongly about that, but if you need it, your solar installer comes into the
Right.
To the zoning board and says, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So how, I mean, you say you don't feel strongly about it, which I get and and all that, but so, but we have to
We gotta pick a moment, yes.
So how would we, let's just follow the logic. So you you go to the zoning board and we're saying in here that, I mean, essentially, I I think we would be saying there's no limit, because because the owner could define whatever they want as their needs.
Right, well, and I think if you're supplying it for the the lot
Right.
Your solar installer is gonna say, oh, yeah, you've got all these electric vehicles, and you've got these heat pumps, and you've got this, you've got a machine shop that has these things in
Let's, let's work with, let's assume for this discussion, a lot where, you know, it's it's a loaded lot. It's got like everything, you know, it's got four EVs, it's got
Sure, it's got a
Machine shop, it's got a
Heat pool.
What's that?
Heated Olympic sized pool.
Heated, yeah.
Indoor riding, indoor riding range.
Whatever, yeah, well, okay, but but actually, you know, that that could happen.
But John, actually, we're saying, anybody could say they're gonna put that all that stuff in.
Right.
So we're saying there's no limit, I mean
Well, that's what I'm getting at.
And and I think, you know, so maybe we don't care if there's a limit, but if we were worried about somebody setting themselves up in the private power generation business.
Well, I don't, I I mean, I'm not so concerned about that, because we'll address that where, you know, as long as they're, well, I guess
That's a separate category, right?
It's, I guess somebody could game that, but let's put that aside for now, that that it's it's as as you're saying. So the the part that would concern me is is if somebody legitimately or illegit, you know, or just games it by saying, I need this because this is what I plan to do. And and it's, it's a lot, I mean, it's a ton. So where does, where is the limit on how many, let's say, trackers they could put on their property?
So I guess what I would say is, we currently do this with surveyors and septic engineers and all. They come in, they sit here and they say, oh, yeah, no, no sweat, you need about this much space and this and that, and it'll be fine, and because they're professionals, because they have those professional responsibilities, they say, yes, indeed, there's no problem getting a septic in here, or there's no, this is, I'm just asserting, this is what, this is what's true. If they, if in the the solar installer, it's the same thing. If somebody came in and they said, I I need a megawatt installation, I need, you know, to cover two acres or something acres of solar panels for my, for my house. I, I need a megawatt installation. I need, you know, to cover two acres or something acres of solar panels for my, for my house. The solar installer has a professional relationship with the board, presumably not to tell stories, to tell.
I, I would disagree with you on that.
Okay.
And the reason being is, when you look at a survey and you look at a septic design, there is a stamp there.
Right.
That is a professional stamp that they have to earn, they have to, and there are standards that they have to be met by. And if they don't meet those standards, they lose that. Your sales rep from a solar installer.
Oh, interesting. Yes.
Does not, he is, you know, no different than a used car salesman. No, he is trying to sell a product.
That's right.
And, and so, he, his professional, or his ability to do his profession is not on the line if he is not honest.
Okay.
And so, I, I think you can't put the, the two categories together. They are absolutely a professional. They know their business. They can talk, you know, do the calculations, but they're not bound by any type of professional conduct.
So, and so, relying on their word doesn't.
It worries me. Just.
So, you know, I think.
If you have an electrician that designs, you know, that's, again, he's a licensed professional. But he's not the, the person who's, you know, I don't know any of the sales reps I've ever talked to that.
They give you a warm feeling. They're very nice. They're very personable, but.
They are very much so, but I, you know, they are trying to sell the maximum that they can.
Well, and.
Right. Yeah, and then now, I'm not disagreeing with you. One other thing I'd like to bring up.
Okay.
Quick calculation. And we were talking about how sizing these things, and you're talking of 7,000 to 10,000 kilowatts. If you have a 200 amp service in your house, which is very, a very common size service, at 240 volts, which is the, the line voltage coming in, that equals 48,000 watts. And so, if you come to me and say, I want something to service my house, and I want 48,000 watts for it, that, for, for 200 amp service house, that's a reasonable request.
Well, except if, except you never draw.
You never draw that, absolutely, but.
Well, you don't know. The system is, is, is built to serve that amount, so maybe sometimes you do.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
This is, I think there's a, potentially, a really serious problem by going down the road of, of saying, using a percentage of, there's so many vagaries in that language. 100%, whether it's 100 or 120%, let's just say 100 because that gets in, 120 gets into the world of imagination. But 100% of, of properties uses, there's, there's two problems really. One is, or the one, one road is what David's pointing out. But the other thing is, let's say that even if it's feasible to somehow get around that, what's driving the development of the lot at that point isn't what the lot can handle. It's what we have provided the means for overriding things. That's what's driving the development of the lot. What I like about how the town has approached this, using structures and, and all of that is it's based on the capacity of the lot. So, otherwise, you know, somebody could, I, I don't know. We, we, we don't know what the town feels like on the whole, but.
I started with the size issue and I couldn't really get my head around it. And, and, you know, I've been vocal about solar this whole time and I feel like tonight I'm going to walk it back a little bit and, and, and I've come around to the, a little more of the do nothing approach. And this is echoing what John's saying, is that the challenges of crafting this are so difficult. It's going to be a quagmire to get the language down when, what's, what's the problem? What problem are we trying to solve?
Right now, from what, from what the feedback I've had from David is, we're not having a problem.
Yeah, so there's, there's been basically no one who's had an issue, right? There's one house you mentioned where if they got it on.
And that was a lot coverage thing, and I, I put in a special exception here for this.
Maybe we can do lot coverage and that sort of gets the size, but if, if I want to build 50 kilowatts and do a group net meter project, if I haven't the lot coverage to do it, I can do it, right?
Yeah.
So, what problem are we trying to solve?
Well, they.
Doesn't it clear that it's a structure, I would say?
It's a structure.
That's all you have to do is say, you know, solar energy systems are structures and.
Well, that's what it says.
Exactly. That's, that's really all you need to do.
And I think we should, I think we should give some definitions. We need to make it clear what, what it is. We need to give David the language to calculate the lot coverage. And we could just, maybe we need to decide whether 50, 75%, I don't know. That's a topic of discussion. We can argue about that. But, you know, just, I, I've talked to a number of people and, and about, you know, axoals, wetlands, setbacks, things like this. And a lot of the answers people gave me essentially described how our zoning ordinance treats structures. And that's, I was like, okay, why are we doing this?
And I had a similar experience with somebody who I thought would be, you know, wildly want, want us to be very, very open ended. And, and I was really surprised as like, you know, like, what are you guys up to? It was just sort of that sort of a thing.
Yeah, I think, I think there's, there, if, to the extent there's this perception in line that the zoning is so restrictive and there's so many hurdles and blah, 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 blah. If we go trying to craft this article that has all this stuff in it, people are going to look at it and think.
Well, actually, you had that on your blog, and I was going to take issue with that. It's not this one, the other one, saying how it's so difficult to get a shed sided on a lot. It's patently not true. So, I had a really hard time with that. But, but, so, and I know you can get a shed on your lot.
Let me do this. Let me say, I take it back. I mean, I was pushing that point to say, if you wanted to do it, you should get 100%. Eric points out, we're not seeing a problem now that, that by and large, people can put what they need. Let's not spend a lot of time writing rules. I mean, I'm okay not writing rules.
Not writing what?
Not writing rules.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And so, you know, I think, I think lot coverage question is a good one, but we can go setbacks, other dimensional controls.
And what about, what, I'm sorry.
Even axoals, there's already, you know, especially for structures and axoals. So, why do we need to touch that?
Yeah, I said, the definition and solving the law.
And the less language, frankly, the less language, the better.
You don't even have to say roof mount or ground mount. It's like, well, duh.
Exactly.
Like I said, I, as soon as somebody says it's a roof mount.
They're done.
Yeah, that's no different than shingles.
Unless you have a height issue.
But, but the shingles, actually, you'll, you'll itch for about three weeks after.
So, we thought of one that's similar. So, am I correct that in the common district, driveways are counted as lot coverage?
Yes, it is.
So, what if one puts a cardboard over the driveway with solar panels on it? Then you're not, that would be similar to the roof mount.
That's roof mount, though.
That would be roof mount.
It's a new structure, but it's over an existing structure.
I, I would, I would not count it as additional lot coverage.
Because it isn't.
It isn't.
Because your, your, your lot coverage is, you know.
Unchanged.
Yeah, so even if you had a, a ground mounted system that you raised up high enough to.
Over the driveway.
Over the driveway to get your UPS guy in. I just wouldn't want to see UPS driver taking out your solar panels every couple of weeks.
I wouldn't want to see a highway.
So, so we.
Yeah, sorry.
I just, I, yeah, I agree. I mean, I think we can leave things the way they are probably. I just think, and I know people don't agree with you, but I think we could have some problems down the road. And I, I don't have any solutions to that. But I've talked to, well, I talked to Kevin Sarr also. What he, what they do.
Did anybody not speak to Kevin?
I haven't spoken to Kevin in a while.
What they do, what they do where he lives is, you can only put solar panels on roofs. They have to be approved by your neighbors, and they can't be seen from the road.
But that's a homeowner's association.
So, that's, that's one extreme. I mean, obviously, we're not.
We're not doing that.
But I did talk to a couple of people, and they were saying that, well, if somebody put an array of ground mount, you know, in my view, I would not be happy.
You know, we run into that multiple times. I can tell you that there was a garage put in Lime Center last year that Mike Monday, the fire chief, was like, I don't like it because it's in my view. And it's like, well, you just put one up yourself. You know, it's.
But I, but the point is, not, not everybody agrees with this, but I think a lot of people view solar panels as different for buildings.
They are, they are different.
They are different. So, in other words, somebody might not object to a garage or a barn or whatever, but they're not objecting. So, I just, but I don't have an answer, you know. I think, I just think there's going to, there's going to be some people in town that I, I can foresee, they would go to court. I mean, you know, people that have enough money, they're going to try to stop.
They're going to sue their neighbor. They're not going to sue the town.
Right.
Well, they'll sue the town.
The town is always thrown in there.
Because they'll say that the town approved it.
We can't.
There's a bus nearby.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, we want to do what's the best thing and we want to mitigate, you know, lawsuits, but we can't not legislate.
I guess my point is, you know, I'm certainly supporting solar. I certainly, I just.
I think it's a fair point.
I think we have to think about this because people view these differently.
Well, let's just.
Okay, if we're allowed 15 years to argue about it, that'd be great. Maybe that's what we need is to have.
This is the problem with, with progress in the energy industry is everybody is yelling solar, but not in my backyard. And then nothing changes.
So, the other issue is the historical.
Let me just, let me just, before we get to the historical stuff, let's just go back, back to what you're saying. I mean, right now, we have an existing approach that seems to be working. Under the existing approach, fortunately or unfortunately, depending upon the individual case, and I can imagine, you know, something happened that, something happening that would upset me. But under the existing zoning, things seem to be working and I, I don't, I don't know.
One of the other things about the existing zoning, and you've made this point many times, Vicky, is that there is a level of fairness in this that if you're putting in solar, you have to go through the same procedure as somebody putting in a garage, a barn, a shed. And so, if you allow solar completely on a lot or, you know, fill up a lot with solar, but your neighbor can't put a shed, that is something that they could bring to the courts and say, this zoning is not fair. They're allowing this one particular type of structure, but they're not allowing my type of structure. And you may find a judge looks at that and says, yeah, that is not a, a fair way of.
Regulating my use.
Exactly.
But you may also find a judge who says, I, I complain that I have to put in screening for my solar, Purton's comments. I have to put in screening for my solar, but if I want to build a hideous, ugly metal bar in there, I don't have to put in screening, and that's unfair.
That's true.
And I find a judge who shoots that down.
Right, but I'm just saying, you know, there, there is a, a level of fairness that is happening with the current.
Yeah, all things are being treated equally.
All things are being treated equal.
I, I'm not agreeing with you.
Yeah, that is.
And then people could bring up lowering their property value. So, that's a whole other issue. I mean, how that would go through the courts.
But I could, I could park old Monebago's in the setbacks.
You can build your ugliest house.
Otherwise, I'll consider it a junkyard and shut you down.
No, it's true, but I just think that people.
Tim, I, I think you're absolutely.
They're not being shut down.
Would you like to share what you were discussing with the rest of us? No, please don't. I think Tim's point is, is absolutely true.
I, I agree too, but I don't.
I don't have an answer.
I, I don't think we have an answer to that. I think it's, it's something that we might have to live with. But it, you know, any one of us or anybody in town, I could, I can foresee that, you know, in these circum, in certain circumstances, people are going to be unhappy.
Yeah, the other thing is that right now, there's a certain amount of solar being put in, but as panels get more efficient, they get cheaper. I think in the years to come, there's going to be a lot more. But then, you know, we might have to adjust it in the future.
But the arrays might be smaller because the.
But, but we're only legislating for now.
Yeah, right. And, you know, one of the things, somebody sent me a note and said, so like, you know, what if, you know, people start seeing solar panels all around? And I say, well, you know, maybe they will come like now, or maybe they, they will become seen as a sign that you're either smart or rich because you can put the solar panels in and you're.
Well, how about you're, you're doing something for the future and for your grandchildren?
That's the smart part.
It is sort of a new age status.
Yeah, and so, and, you know, in the big picture.
But that's not. Yeah, I mean.
It's 3%.
Look, look, what can you do?
But I think really what that person was talking, I mean.
Or you can, can give it to the Sierra Club, but, you know, if you're really changing something, you're doing it and doing the best you can.
Right.
So, so, I mean, the way I interpret that, if I'm understanding it correctly, is what the person was sort of saying was, I might not like it.
Yeah, right.
And, and, and that's to.
And that's to Tim's point too, yeah.
I don't know how to address that.
I, I don't know either. You know, I'm willing to say, well, that maybe we should revisit this in a year. Give them more experience if.
You mean not, not do this this year?
I mean, what, what, what might we say? I mean, I'm, I'm, I think I'm agreeing with Eric that maybe what we got is really close to, to good enough.
Yeah, and then wait and see if there are any.
Well, I would say trying to clarify something that's not clear, that, that is the, the, you know, lot coverage aspect. Everybody doesn't have to go in the zoning board for clarification about that or whatever. So, get that clear.
It's more efficient.
Um, then I think that's a service to the towns. Everybody knows how you calculate that.
But really, what we're doing is taking the, I mean, what I, what I think we're doing is we're taking the existing treatment and making it statutory and, and clarifying so that it's, so that, I mean, it's treated as a structure, but we don't mention it anywhere.
Yeah, I mean, if you're, if you're moving to town and you want to build solar panels and you pick up the zoning ordinance and start looking, you don't see anything.
There's none.
So, you're scratching your head. At least it there's.
I think we need to have it in there.
You have a photograph in there. You say, oh, there it is. It's just like anything else.
So, what about the historic district? Do we want to just even forget about that too?
Well, I think that, I'm, I think that's another issue is, the historic district is here.
There's nothing in the zoning that's a historic district.
Yeah, we don't, we don't.
We don't regulate the historic district.
No, I'm just saying, do we want to try to keep the historic district?
Yeah.
There, there is no historic district.
But forget calling it the historic district.
Well, there is.
Okay, hold on, hold on. Forget that. The area around, around the common.
And Lime Center.
And Lime Center. The villages, let's just call it the village.
It is a national.
I understand. Let's just, for the sake of brevity, call it the villages, the village areas. Should they be handled the same way or differently? I mean, let's, let's take a small lot in, in the Lime Con, right around the common.
But see, then it's not fair because if you, somebody happens to live there and they can't put in solar, they say, well, if I live in my lot.
But they don't live, but they don't live in my lot. I, I can't open a, a nuclear plant on, on my property, and it's been bothering me for years.
Well, fortunately, most of the people around the common don't have big, big front yards. So, they're not going to be able to put structures of any kind in their front yards. So, that's a plus. And hopefully, you know, it's like everybody on the south side, they're going to put it on their south roof or in their backyard. And so, it's the people who are on the north side of the common that might have a roof that slopes, you know, with a southern exposure that we have to be concerned about and.
Do we want to put anything in there about screening?
Many of them are gable front, so.
Or non-glare or anything like that?
Well, I would hope that they, they're non-glare because that really defeats the purpose of.
I noticed in some of the other ordinance, when they talk about. I noticed in some of the other ordinance, when they talk about, you know, having non-glare.
I think a lot of that actually refers to the, the frame, whether it's silver or matte black. Cause some have an aluminum frame on, some that's matte black and the aluminum gives off a lot of glare.
Cause reading some of these other towns like Hollis and sort of towns, they're, they're a lot more strict than we.
Well, a lot of it's like, good luck.
Yeah, unenforceable.
I mean, yeah, it sounds really like, oh, great, but how are they really gonna do that?
You know, they say to allow for the use of solar energy systems of the community while maintaining unsent scenic business. Preserve the community's rural character, particularly a scene from public roads.
Well, we have our hillside and ridge line thing, and this is a structure that would be governed by the exact same.
We have, yeah, we have ridge lines with a steep slope. So we're, we're addressing that with structures, so.
Right.
Addressing with language that has, has some, not to say teeth to it, but it, it is clearly defined. A lot of that is.
It's fluff.
And really it's, it's very hard to enforce fluff.
Frankly, it's, it's to reassure people, but it's, I don't think it's enforceable.
No, and so I say the front yards are also small in the villages that you don't have to worry about installations in people's front yards. And if there is a landlord that wants to get a variance to do that, that is when the public goes out and says, you know, come on, this is a historic district. Don't put that there unless it looks like a wishing well or something like that, you know? Well, I'm, you know, just trying to think, you know, find something that's, you know, contextual that would look, you know, but. So I don't, I don't think that it's that huge of a problem actually, Tim. I think, yes, there won't be things in the backyard. Um, but I, you know, especially south side of the town, cause they've got very deep backyards. And that's the perfect place for them, you know, honestly, where we can't see them.
Yeah. Well, our, yeah, I mean, it's another issue, but.
What's that?
Our co, our common is not that attractive compared to other towns anyway. When you drive in, between the telephone poles and signs.
Yeah.
Anyway, it's too bad. I mean, that's another issue.
Yeah, let's, let's save that for now. It is too bad.
Cause of the cars.
Yeah, cause you think about a lot of other towns around here, their commons are gorgeous. And we're driving along and it's like, oh my god.
Well, it, it used to be a lot better looking, but it started when they, when they just hacked all the trees.
Anyway.
I think it's pretty good looking, guys.
Compared to other towns, it's awful.
You know.
I drove in today and I'm driving you, and it's like the telephone poles, the love, the powers, then you look at all these signs.
All right, all right, let's stay, let's stay on task.
This is, this is not our purview. We don't have to worry about this.
Stay on task. So, uh, you wanna say something?
Well, I think, I think, you know, I, I think we're in agreement here. The only thing we gotta figure out is what about lot coverage?
So, all right, so here's a suggestion, um, that everybody's got a copy of the, this thing I said. So, um, let's, yeah, let's, this thing.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Let's, let's get rid, let's simplify this. We can get rid of a lot of the definitions maybe. Like Vicki was saying, we don't need to make distinctions between ground or, or, was that what you were saying?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah, it's like, yeah.
Or even onsite.
Well, onsite I think is important, um, so that it distinguishes it from that it, that it's, the purpose of it is consistent with an accessory use.
Yeah, I, I think that that's the, the, I, I don't want people to think, oh, great, the solar in here, I can, I have, I'm gonna go buy this big piece of property and I'm gonna put in a commercial.
Exactly.
And then, you're in the rural district, you can't do that.
So, so it says.
I would appreciate that being in there.
Yeah, a solar energy system designed to help meet the electrical needs within the limits of a lot.
But we are, if, if we're, if we're taking this, this less a fair approach, um, and a lot will support commercial or grid meter, we're, we're saying we're gonna allow.
Well, this isn't, we're, by the definition of this as an accessory use to a principal use, you can't have a commercial. It's not a commercial.
Well, I, I think we're.
On site.
Okay, what we need to do is add, if we want it to be commercial, we add it to the list of business uses.
Exactly.
And then say which.
It's not, it's not a listed business use.
Allowed.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so that's easily done if we wanna do it, but let's deal with the easy thing first, which is the accessory that to whatever lot it's on.
I, I think in terms of that, we, we need feedback. I mean, more than this part.
So as far as lot coverage is concerned, I've always been curious, what, what's the purpose of our current lot, current lot coverage numbers?
What do you think?
I have no idea. You've been around on this board older than I have, John.
But I, I mean, I didn't put in, I mean, forget, forget our numbers. What is the purpose of having limits on lot coverage?
I mean, you know, rural is two percent.
Well, forget the specifics.
It's to allow infiltration and to keep massing on a site low. So that you have a lot of, you know, elbow room between structures.
Cause I mean, that's like New York, New Jersey.
It's not only what it looks like, it's also the functionality of the ecosystem on the site. So, I, I mean, it's, to me, it's self-evident why any town would have lot coverage restrictions.
Well, you know, you're, you're trying to look at the scale of the development on a lot. So you have a very tiny lot, you have the, the percentage is going to be about the same as a percentage on a larger lot. When you, you're, you're gonna have a larger percentage on a larger lot, but the scale, so everyone gets the same scale based on their lot size, up to a maximum.
Well, and then there's also been like studies that have looked at watershed impairment that start at about, I mean, it's severe at like twelve percent lot coverage. And that's over watershed. But, you know, you can look at Hanover and know that you've got impaired, you know, impaired waterways because you've got, you know, pretty much, you know, impervious cover through a lot of the downtown area with the parking and.
Sure, right.
So, uh, but that's like a University of Maryland study. And it's probably been updated and refined a bit, but, you know, twelve percent is severe impairment. And seven to eight percent, you start getting, you know, change in water temperature and, you know, chemicals and not enough. You know, shading in the waterways and stuff like that. So that is like a scientific reason. But then, and then the infiltration is.
And, and I will say that, you know, when, when I started actually, I thought, oh yeah, no, that's nice that, that we have all this stuff and everything, but I, you know, I, it was okay. But I've, I've grown to have a much better, at least I think I have a much better understanding of how important it is. And on that note, um, I'm offering anybody on the, on the board who would like to read this, I'd be happy to lend it to you. This isn't, this isn't really about that, but he goes into it deeply as, as it relates to ecosystems. And he has a whole book that actually Eric has now, how important it is on individual lots, small lots. How big a difference people treating their lots differently than we do can contribute. In his mind, I think he's an idealist, but to, to a real solution to a problem.
So.
So Eric has.
Well, nature's best.
Do you raise your name in it?
I, trash.
Yeah, I read, I read it, Rich. It's good.
Anyway, I came away from that with a much better understanding. And, and also I also read the one that Eric has, which is, is more on a micro level of how this, how the, how the sys, the ecosystem works and, and the layers and the sensitivity. So where before, quite frankly, when I started, when, when people would talk about wetlands and wetlands buffers and things like that, I was like, yeah, okay. You know, it's, it's nice.
He's really talking about oak trees.
He's, yeah, but he's talking, no, he's not just talking. He's talking about oak trees as, as a, as a very, as a keystone species. But in talking about them, he describes the layers of, of the ecosystem and how sensitive it is. And how even on small lots, so.
All right, cool.
I think, I think we're really well-served by, by these things in terms of public benefit and help. Doesn't mean that we, we couldn't change them or whatever, but I have a much, much greater appreciation for the, the science behind it than I did when I started.
I think he's talking, he's, he's talking at the mantra. I think, uh, it, it, it's soon, like, like, yeah, Everhard loves having.
Yeah, he's from the University of Delaware.
And could you send David a link to that study, dig that out and send it to David?
I will try to find it, yes.
Thank you. That would be useful.
Here's my pet.
And also, nature's best hope is the one you have.
Yeah.
Which is really a.
Is this same guy?
Same guy.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
The, well, when you're done, you can lend it to him.
Emily has it. We're almost done.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I would, well, we're.
Seventy-five years, well, suddenly it's changed.
Well, the other thing is, um, if, another really good read is, um, is put out recently by, I think it's National DES about trails and people and the impact that just a trail has on, I mean, you think a trail's a really low impact kind of use, but guess what? It is not in terms of the environmental impact. And, um, there's actually, you know, their impact's up to four hundred feet, you know, so two hundred feet on either side. And they've done studies about how F's have to use, you know, energy and, you know, brown, you know, nesting birds have to use.
Yeah, I mean, this is, but we're, we're getting off the.
That's really impressive.
We're getting off the thing and, and we, we do have to balance the reality that, you know, we're all, we're all living here and, and we have to.
So just as a, I'll jump you back on.
Yeah.
Right now, when I look at a solar panel, I, you know, roof mount, that's existing, so I don't include that. If you have a ground mount system, I look at the actual area of the, the panel that covers the ground. So basically look at the, you know, use Pythagorean theorem to figure out the, the, how much, Eric. As for the trackers, that's a, a difficult one. And my opinion is that when a tracker, um, hits bad weather, um, which is, you know, when you're looking at rainstorms, windstorms, uh, they are designed to go completely horizontal. And so they are actually collecting and shedding all that rainwater right off the, the panel itself. So my feeling on the tracker is I'm going to count them at a hundred percent of the size of the panel.
Square footage.
The square footage. So that is currently, um, since there is no direction.
Today.
That is my policy today.
It seems, that seems harsh on the, on the trackers.
It, it does, um.
It does, except with a tracker, you need fewer than you do with a ground, with a fixed array, so it may actually balance out.
Well, I mean, you know, it comes to, it comes around to what, what's the goal. I was gonna say, trackers, count them as, you know, whatever our latitude is, or, you know, forty-five degrees or, or whatever. Um, it, it, your, your, the, the angle is going to change by the, the season.
Of course. I, I, I totally agree.
So again, that, that's where, you know, I'm looking for a.
You need a simple number.
I need a simple number.
Just taking the worst-case scenario, which makes it the most conservative in terms of impact, right? And if a person is really aggrieved by having to abide within, go to the zoning board and ask for relief. So, you know, I can't possibly do it. I've got a tiny lot, you know, little lot. And they, they are understanding people. They are peers and they may give that person relief on his, his lot coverage. So that, that sounds like, just like if I wanna have a little bigger shed because my snow blower's really huge. You know, but I don't have the lot coverage. Can you guys please help me?
Okay. Um, the, the only thing I would say about the, the special exceptions as they exist right now, most of them are only available to anybody who had a house prior to zoning. So if you build a brand-new house and it happens that your lot is small, let's take the, the lot that you approved tonight. Um, they're going to have very limited lot coverage after they build their house. They are not going to, they, they would have to get a variance for solar. And in some ways, a variance, you know, the criteria, there's five criteria for a variance. A special exception, there's fourteen.
Right.
Well.
With a variance, it's harsh.
Well, that's the hardship and.
Well, let's hope that every new house is built with an orientation to take advantage of the sun.
Bingo. I took the words out of my mouth. It's an easy term to sell.
So that's really easy for newer lots in my book. And that's what every designer should be doing anyway.
Yeah, right. So.
I think we're getting dangerously close to declaring that we don't have a problem, that we don't have to change it.
No, no, that's not what we're.
Oh, okay. I was trying to simplify.
Nice try. No, I mean, what we're saying is we wanna have a statutory presence in the zoning ordinance so that when people, for David's sake, and for, for clarity's sake, and when people wanna find out what they can do, it's, nobody's gonna look up structure when they're looking for solar, uh, solar stuff.
So I was gonna say, uh, I did look at structure and there's a lot of things in there. Stone wall, mailbox, light pole. I mean, we could put in renewable energy, uh, ground mount renewable energy systems such as solar panels. Put it right in there and it becomes a structure.
That's one, that's an approach, but I think it's a little too general because we wanna address the accessory use. We don't wanna, uh, at this point, we're not dealing with commercial. So I, I think we need to be, the, the point of this exercise is to be clear.
Right.
And not, and it, that's an approach, but I think it's still a little vague and could be interpreted different ways. What I'd suggest is, is, uh, for your homework this week, using this uh, and, and crossing out everything or adding anything you want to it. But I would, I would ask that we make it as lean as possible.
Okay.
All right.
But what they haven't talked about is whether we are going to, uh, adjust the percentage of the lot coverage?
Yeah, the only thing I, I put in here was, was a possible special exception for, for adding additional lot coverage if, prior to the passage of this, you had used up all your, all your, uh, lot coverage.
Right, that's, that's different than what I was just, I was thinking of the notion that, okay, we're gonna count solar structures as only fifty percent of our lot.
Oh, okay. Well, we can discuss that.
Which, I think we should not do that, but that has been a topic that had come up. If we're all in agreement that you should count a hundred percent of that coverage then.
Well, I, I think if we're gonna count fifty percent, we're essentially, uh, then we might as well increase the lot coverage. It's just a different way of increasing the lot coverage.
I think it's a, I think even that, even the counting percentage of the panels for lot coverage is a slippery slope because. What if, what if they burn out and I park my cars under them, then it's a garage, right, or?
I think we should be really clear and as simple.
Anyhow, lot coverage hasn't been a problem.
There's one. One case?
Yeah, and that, and that, I, that I tried to address in the special exception. Cause this was somebody, somebody who had, it's actually my neighbor, who, who had, um, used up all their lot coverage prior to when, um, it's not that nobody was using solar stuff then, but, you know, before it really boomed. And, uh, he ended up getting, you know, he, he ended up putting it on his roof, but he wanted to have trackers and he, he couldn't because he used up every, every bit of his lot coverage.
Well, I think that that's gonna be a thing where, um, you know, if, if it's, you know, really technically impossible to have a roof mounted system, then, and you've used all your lot coverage, then maybe you can have.
A special exception.
Right.
For, you know, a variance is also.
Yeah, but we don't, we don't wanna send people looking for variance. We, we wanna foresee.
But if, if you're only dealing with, um, one case every five years. But if, if you're only dealing with one case every five years.
Well, I, I don't think he got a variance.
No, he was denied a variance.
He was denied a variance.
It's almost impossible to get a variance, right?
Well, depends on the, the situation. I mean, it's hard, but.
Because you have to show hardship.
Well, there are hardships.
Yeah, there, and, you know, the, the way the state typically defines hardship is that you cannot use your lot in the same way that your neighbors can.
Right.
And so, and, and neighbors with similar sized lots, you know, they're not.
So, so there, there are cases where that, and people have gotten variances.
So it's not a financial hardship, there's no.
No, it's not necessarily a financial hardship, it is that you're, the zoning ordinance is creating a hardship because you can't use.
You're getting unequal treatment.
Yes, exactly.
So, so can I circle back to this idea of the fifth percent thing? Because this is the one thing when I talk to people that people seem to be open to. And, you know, so my question for, for Vicky is, why did Hanover decide to just not count them for lot coverage?
That was just to, you know, provide an incentive.
Because what struck me is maybe, maybe a lot of the lots are built out and that would be a big problem.
No, no, it's pretty, you know, if you go on Hanover GIS and look at solar installations, there's, you know, on the GIS, it comes up with little yellow dots, it's really impressive, I think they're on their fourth round of solar rise, Hanover of course. But so many people have done it, it's pretty amazing.
What's our coverage in line?
I don't know, well, it's, it's in the energy chapter, right? In terms of, I don't know how many installations, but didn't they talk about the kilowatts?
Well, the kilowatt, but that, I mean, I'm just wondering, like, in terms of a visual, like you were.
Well, I don't know.
I, I don't have a, you know, I've never gone through and, I can go through and pull.
It's okay, I was just.
I actually track that, so I can.
Oh, so you could generate a GIS now?
I, I could, I, you know, it takes me a while because I have databases of everything, but they're, they're stored yearly. And so I, when I do queries, I have to set up the queries to multiple, query multiple years to get. And so it takes a little while to, and I never can remember how to write the query.
So one last comment about the, again, about the fifty percent thing is, another way to look at it, we don't, we don't often look at things in this way. And if this constraint is not binding, and it's only been binding in one case, then it doesn't matter if we change the, the rule either, right? So if we change it, so we say, if we say all of a sudden, okay, solar does not count at all for a lot coverage, people aren't gonna go out all of a sudden and go gangbusters because nobody's butting up against that constraint anyway.
Right.
Right?
Well, do we know that?
Will David tell me how it works?
No, no, but I mean, do we know that going forward?
There, there may be.
I'm not supportive of it myself. I'm, I'm not, I, I, you know, because I think it's an equity thing. If somebody can't even build their shed, you know, why should somebody else be able to put on, you know, solar when that's like a luxury item compared to what might be essential for somebody?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I don't consider it a luxury item, actually.
I was gonna say, which one's a luxury item?
Yeah.
Uh, I would, well.
No, no, I think I, there's an argument that either could, could be.
Investment in your solar, I'm sorry to say. And, you know, will I ever see it in my lifetime with payback? Probably not.
I mean, I'd love to put in solar, but it is just not in the numbers, I'm just plain and simple, you know? I'm, I'm glad people are investing in it now because hopefully in ten or fifteen years, it'll drive the price down enough that I can afford it, but certainly.
And everybody benefits.
Mine's like over, it's like twenty years, I, I don't have that many, yes. And this is my second system, it, but you know what?
What happened to your first?
I sold the house.
Oh.
I didn't bring it with me.
Yeah, yeah, but you, but you, but theoretically you got paid for a house with a solar.
First thing to the house.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm, I'm hopeful, yeah.
All right, all right, so, so moving, moving on. Vicky, Vicky very kindly provided this, this calendar of events, so, January twenty-second, Thursday, January sixth is the last day to post and publish notice for first public hearing on proposed zoning amendments. If a second hearing is anticipated, I would say if a second hearing is possible, which it always is. So we would have to have approved, and how, how far?
Almost fourteen days is the.
But that's the day you would have to post and publish.
Oh, right, post, yeah, that's right.
So January sixth, that, that means that our last meeting in December, unless we have extra meetings.
Which would be your first meeting in December because your last meeting will fall during Christmas week and you typically cancel that.
So that will be, yeah, we, we have only two meetings usually, one, and, and one meeting in November and one in.
December.
So we have, we have two meetings, yeah, we're at the end of September, so we have October. And then we, no, and then we have the two meetings, so we have four meetings, I think we can nail this down in four meetings.
Yeah, do we have, do we have cases next week?
At the moment, no.
We should be able to do this.
Your second meeting in this, in October, October, thank you, I couldn't come up with the word. The twenty-eighth, I will not be here.
What? What?
I will be in Washington DC at the time.
All right.
Straightening that out.
Yeah, yeah, gonna fix that.
No, I'm going to a Van Gogh exhibit that's down there.
Oh, wonderful.
They put it up on the walls.
I, I saw, I, I, my sister sent me photos.
I'm gonna get, I have tickets already to go see that. And then I'm gonna go to, to Chincoteague Island in Virginia for the weekend after that.
Oh, man, that's great.
I think it's Aceteam, not Chincoteague.
It might be Aceteam, I'm not sure.
They're like, they're, they're, I don't even know what makes.
It's my sister's condo on the water on one of them, I don't know, but it's not gonna cost me a penny to go there, so I'm.
That's wonderful, I can't imagine why you, why you'd want to miss the meeting for that.
Well, actually, I'm really looking forward to the, the, the Van Gogh.
I'll tell you, I went when I was, what, twenty years old, I went to the Van Gogh Museum in Amsterdam. And I don't, I, in the context of my life at the time, and, and actually going forward, it was life altering. I mean, I, they had everything chronologically, so you went from, he starts off like a kind of very black and white and then brown and white, and then all of a sudden it's like he must have taken some acid or something. Because he went from, like, if you look at the potato eaters, which is the families sitting around the table, and it's, it's brown and black and, and white and beige. And then it's just like an explosion into another world, something happened. Anyway.
I'm looking forward to it.
I was thrilled.
Didn't he cut off his ear?
Yeah, he was, he was going to Dead concerts.
First first show.
No, no, no.
I couldn't take anything down with me unfortunately, so.
No, cutting off your ear will not, will not give you technicolor.
Oh, nicely done.
So, so John, I, I failed to send you a note.
Okay, but you keep, you keep promising to do it.
I, I know. Can I read it?
And you get fifty cents for it?
It's fine, could, could we have everybody's attention?
Yeah.
We're gonna have another dramatic reading.
I know. So given that we're in the budget season, I propose the planning board request to select board allocate the following funds. One, board member education, there are any, a number of conferences, workshops, et cetera, that talk about current best zone and planning practices. I attended just such a workshop last weekend for which I paid seventy dollars registering for myself.
Which one was that?
It was the Hampshire Minnesota Association.
Which one?
Land use law.
Land use law, right, yeah, it was really good.
And there was, there were a lot of good.
Yeah, there was a lot of them.
So, anyway, short answer, I think we should ask the planning, the, the select board to pony up a hundred bucks for each member to use.
Well, I think it should be pooled, you know, because I can see those things, my, my visit, my, my, yeah, and then somebody else could use my hundred dollars.
Right, right. Just, you know, a hundred bucks for each, each member. Second, the plan in Hampshire has a municipal technical assistance grant program. It's designed to pay consultants to help the municipality with housing issues. So the grant can go from five to twenty-five thousand dollars. The town has to put up fifteen percent cash in kind payment. So a twenty-five thousand dollar grant would require thirty-seven hundred.
Yeah, now, I don't know whether I'm, I'm remembering the right thing, but I looked at, I think it was that. I think last year or something, you gave a handout.
That's right.
And then, and then in the small print.
Yep.
It said something like, I, I don't remember the exact language, but it was something to the effect of, once you do this, you're committed, it, it, the commitment in terms of giving, handing over control to the consultant was way beyond what I'm comfortable with.
Well, okay, so my request is that we ask the select board to put up five thousand dollars toward that so that we can talk about it in the.
Well, I think we should talk about it before requesting five thousand dollars.
If we don't ask for it now, I can promise they're not gonna hear it.
Well, put in the professional education or the.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't.
The volunteer training stuff is like a no brainer.
That's a no brainer, right?
And the other one, we really need to have a project in line that we all agree to.
Yeah, I, I don't, you know, just having, all right, I've put in monies in the past for training and for, for whatever uses. And when they're looking for a number to slash, that's one of the first things that goes because what they look, well, what they look at is how much has been used in the past. And they say, after, you know, you had this in the budget for three years and nobody used it, and so.
I, I think if, if, that's, that's the tail wagging the dog. We, we don't ask for the money for something that, I can tell you from my point of view, when I read that, I, it's not something I was particularly comfortable with. I'd rather that the board felt, okay, here's something we want to do, let's get the money. But I, I agree about the educational stuff.
Well, I'd, I'd like to have a speaker come in, you know, have a stipend for a speaker to, like, get people, like, you know, motivated to put ADUs in their house, I mean, the housing market is not going to change, we have to do what we can do in our.
I, I agree, and, and maybe that's, maybe that's something we, we, you know, we had, we had a rental forum. We had a millennial forum, and actually I learned a lot at them. So I, I agree, I think.
Well, and there it'd be really nice to be able to allow people to listen in there, you know, with their wine bottle or their whiskey bottle at home.
That's where I listened to all my lectures, is I hold up the wine bottle.
I know, but I was, you know, just, just saying that that's a good use for the owl, to be able to have as many people, you know.
So I would actually like to ask the, the board for an owl, which, you know.
So let's ask.
Well, every board should be asking.
See this, you can't see this, it says owl.
Yeah.
We should definitely have an owl.
The third thing that I wrote was expenses of the planning and zoning office, I haven't spoken to you about this, but I've said this before. Are there courses, workshops, equipment, software that might help us, you, us?
I mean, I, I certainly have gotten my share of equipment, software, you know, the GIS stuff. New plotter, which by the way, being able to scan.
Oh, you got the plotter?
I've got the plotter and I can scan plans, that to me is the, the.
So can you, so, okay.
So what's an owl?
So, and owl, and it's like the owl's head, it can move like that.
It's a, it's a cone that has three sixty audio capability and three sixty visual capability.
At home can see everybody.
Can see everybody, you set it in the middle, they see all of us plus everybody in the audience, and the thing then will focus on wherever they hear the voice. And if there's a conversation between two people, you get split screen.
A school board has been using that, right?
The school board has.
Well, I suck, it's like, yeah.
Yeah, and it's supposed to be.
Are you gonna get that, or try and get that?
I can ask, but I mean, I think, I think, yeah, for sure I'm gonna ask for it going forward. It sounds like we want to have this, there are meetings over here that, that.
Well, I feel, yes, that, that would be helpful for more than just.
So what we're agreed on is, is the educational and the owl for sure.
And I'm, I always ask for an overhead projector every year that I can project on.
Let's formally ask.
So can we make a motion and?
Let's do, I mean, we're just, let's bring this up again on the agenda.
I will put those in my, yes, I'm still, I have not submitted my budget yet, and so I will.
When our own members can't access the meeting and they're not here because they, you know, health issues, that's.
That's a great law.
Well, like I said, this, there's something wrong with the phone system, I'm gonna look into that because obviously this is the second time.
But the owl makes a big difference too.
The owl, because the owl, then I can use videos, Zoom meetings and not, not be.
And you got enough bandwidth here now.
Now we have enough bandwidth. The technology is available, we shouldn't be.
So you're gonna put it in the budget so that it gets on the books, we'll, we'll come up with some recommendation that says, Gasha Rooney, please give us the money.
Well, no, we want, I, I think that the things we're all agreed on is educational coverage for the members and, and the owl so that we can function. Since the legislature doesn't allow us to, to do remote meetings, we may, we need to make these in-person meetings work.
And I think the, if the public could look in, I mean, it's really hard to listen in on the phone.
Yeah, it's really difficult, you need the visual.
It's bad enough to Zoom, but the phone is.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, thank you, Rich.
So I will put that into my budget and what I would like is, as we get closer, I will ask the board to, and maybe John as a board chair to write a letter, and I'll get Frank to do the same thing in support of those. And that way it'll just, it carries a little more weight with the select board than just me saying, hey, I'd like this technology that you don't understand.
The select board, I'm sure, would love to have it also, it really makes a huge difference.
Of course, of course, and, and given the, the reality of how things are, it's a, it's a necessity. All right, I'd like to make a motion to, and the official part of, of the meeting, is that does anybody have a problem with that? Does anybody like to second it? All right, we have five seconds, so I guess it passes. All right. And so, so Rich is.